Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to return back to open session. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? We are back in session. Please stand for the...
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to our agenda here. I'm going to turn it over to superintendent for recognition of our January graduates.
This is certainly one of our more exciting evenings of the year. We get to honor the students who either decided to graduate early or it took a little bit longer. They kept going, they pushed through, and for us, that's a really exciting thing as well. So we take every opportunity we can to honor those students. And I'm going to pass it to Mike over here to Mr. White.
Superintendent Alange, as principal of senior high, I certify the students presented here have fulfilled all the graduation requirements set forth under New York State Education Law and Niagara-Weefield District Policy. They are now prepared to receive recognition for the work they have successfully completed.
In one of my favorite statements, "By the power vested in me by the Board of Regents of the state of New York and as superintendent of schools, it is my honor to confer upon these students the Niagara-Weefield High School diploma with all the rights and benefits pertaining unto them."
Joseph Rassak. Donovan Para. And Chairz Laurenti.
We want the press and chair to come on, we'll certainly get the chair, if by chance, Chairz walks in, I think certainly the pleasure of board, but we could stop and have a chair, Chairz walks in the door. Okay? I'll turn it over to our president.
Okay, we're going to continue with our agenda?
Yeah, we'll take a few minutes and do some pictures.
We're going to recess for a couple of minutes, we'll be able to take some pictures with our graduates and congratulate them on their special day. We are back, we'll continue with the agenda. Moving on to consensus agenda items, minutes, approval of resolution for school district meeting, field trips, fundraisers, asset disposal. Call for a motion to accept these items, one through eight.
I'll make the motion.
Second, okay. Any discussion, any items to be separated? No, okay.
Can I just clarify, was it one through six?
I had one through eight here. And my sheet said it.
You read all six?
Yeah, I did. It's okay.
It's okay. I just wanted to clarify if somebody saw the numbers, you read all of them?
I did read them all, yes. I'll go back here and just make sure. Accepting the minutes, resolution annual school district meeting, approval of field trips, approval of fundraisers, asset disposal, and approval of IEPs, the items. And there was no other discussion or items to separate, so we'll make a motion. To accept, all in favor? Opposed? Same, okay, motion carries. Personnel items, call for a motion to approve the personnel report, items one through 10. Any items to be separated? Okay, all those in favor approving items in the personnel report? Any opposed? Same, motion carries. We are moving right on. Steve makes this go a little quicker.
The next one's ex officio.
Yep, okay, and to the ex officio student members' report. Okay, president's report. Our president isn't here, but I do have a few items worth mentioning in that report. First, like to congratulate the boys' basketball team, had an excellent season. Class A champions, congrats to Coach O'Brien, his staff and all the players, and they had a great run. Good, good, the winter season went very well for Niagara-Weefield, did very well as far as the league goes and supremacy points, and those will be released probably within the month. So we'll have the results of that. Yesterday, myself and three other board members went on tour of the Boses and Allison. We had a tour of the Niagara Technical Center. Excellent tour, saw our students, other students in process in the different classroom situations. All engaged, some great programs out there. Almost every class that we went in, a person that was guiding us through had asked, show of hands, how many plan on going to college and continuing? There was, there was a large majority who planned on continuing with their education, which is great. Just think, a lot of, you know, students should continue to check out those programs. Doesn't limit what you're going to do, it's just exposure to more education and different ideas. Spring sports are starting, they started Monday. Got new turf this year for teams to play on, and hopefully eliminate the rainouts, come out and support your teams. And just lastly, can graduate the January graduates. Whatever path they took to get to the end of the race here, they did, and congratulations to them. This is my report, go on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Andy stole my thunder with the musical, but I do want to know if the person sitting next to you put you up to say that the Friday performance was the best because that was his day when he was on stage. I'm just, Andy, I'm just wondering, did he put you up to it? We'll talk after. Oh, okay, oh, okay, oh, good save, good save, all right. I, you know, if you had to, if I had to use one word, it would be awesome. The, the musical this year was just, it was awesome. The, watching the students, whether they're in the pit, whether they're behind the stage as part of the crew or they're part of the cast, it's just, it's a lot of fun. And I was really impressed because it was the first time I've ever been backstage while the performance is going on, mainly because nobody, nobody wants to perform. And watching how the, the crew interacted with the cast backstage to make things happen. It's just, it's so smooth, and it's students working with and leading other students. It's just, it's really awesome, and they did a great job. And hats off to the, to the adult leaders that were part of that. And I, I, the night I was there, I know a few of our board members were there, I think three that night. I don't know if others had a chance to see it, but it was just, it was outstanding. They did a great job. You know, one of the things that we certainly missed during COVID, you just, you saw the energy in the place. You saw where last year we did, you know, kind of a virtual compilation of different things for our musical. You know, here you really saw students interacting, and it wasn't just the interacting on that night, right? You know the amount of time and energy and work that went into making those three, those two nights and the, the one day production a real hit, so, what it was. So a lot of fun, a lot of fun to be there. Thanked everybody involved for, for really representing our district well. And some awards maybe will be in the future that they've tended to do really well in those categories before. So we'll see. Graduation dates have been set, so graduation is Thursday, the 23rd at 7:00 PM. If the weather is torrential, the backup date is the 25th, which is Saturday at 10:00 AM. But we're really, the goal, you know, if it's raining a little bit, we'll still be on for, for the 23rd. Still working out the, the five, the times, the final times for the parade. I know that's going to be the Saturday prior, I guess that would be the 18th. But there's, I haven't seen the final time for that yet. So, so we're getting, getting close to the end of the year, and we're starting to talk about all those, those activities again. The, next topic I want to talk about for a minute has to do with threats and social media. We've certainly seen over the last few years, more and more threats that happen on social media, whether or not they pertain to, you know, our individual district, the, the region, the state, the nation. I've seen nationwide threats, and unfortunately, I don't think those are going away. I wish they were, I wish I wasn't, you know, ready to have this conversation in public. But, but I don't think they are going away. And when those threats happen, we, there's a lot of different reactions. And one of them that, that happens is parents, and I understand it, say, should I send my kid to school tomorrow? That's your reaction. And I, I want to help reassure families that we have something in place when those threats happen that might make parents more comfortable sending their kids that next day, whether or not that threat against local, regional, national. So we've had some, some dialogue internally. What I want to propose to the board is putting in place weapons detection systems in our high school and our middle school. They are, they're systems that wouldn't slow down the entry of our students every day. We'd have multiple lanes that they'd be able to walk through. They're not like the old school metal detectors that every, you know, nickel that somebody has in their pocket sets off the alarm. It's, they're, the modern technology is incredible. We are going to see in our region, more districts, I think, moving to this. We have federal funds that can be utilized for something like this. And I just think it's the right thing to do. So, not, doesn't necessarily have to be this evening, but at a very near future meeting, I would like the board to consider action on it. And we would then utilize federal funds to pay for it. The, I think the times now, we could potentially have something like this up and running, I would imagine by the beginning of next week. So, so you, you, you can certainly do that whenever you want. If you, if there's any questions for me right now about it, happy to answer them. Well, you can, you can do that, perfect, perfect, great. So next, still on the topic of safety, we have conference day coming up this Friday, and I just want to, ahead of time, thank all of the first responders for all of the work and time that they spent planning our safety drills when, when we do them. We're going to have two very large scale exercises at Colonial Village and at Tuscula Elementary School. It's the first time we've been at those two buildings, that after that, we will have completed all of our buildings. And the, the, the local law enforcement agencies that play a role, the, the fire, the ambulance, emergency services, they're, they're just amazing when it comes to giving their time to do things for our schools and for our kids and for our staff to be better prepared in the event of emergency. And, and I, you know, even before the drill, I, it's really the time that they've invested up until this point, right? The day of the drill will run very smooth because of all the meetings that we've held before, before this. The, the, that day will run smoothly because of all the walkthroughs that have been done, even the meetings that law enforcement, emergency services, ambulance, fire have had separate from us to make sure that that event goes off smoothly. So I can't say it enough, I thank them for all the time and energy they put in and for putting that together for us for that day. Add to that this, after we do the event, we will do a debrief that some of our administrators with the agencies that are, that are helping us. Then some of them will assist us in doing debriefs with our staff from both Tuscula or Colonial Village. So again, the time that they invest in that to help us is appreciated. Next, one of the topics that came up last year here, right around budget time, had to do with ice hockey, and it's, it's coming, come up again. For those that don't know, it's one of the few sports that families have a requirement to pay for something to make it happen. There's a lot of booster work that happens for a lot of our sports, of course. But that, that booster work doesn't have to do with just getting on the field or getting on the ice, except for with hockey. And practices have historically been paid for by families. And last year, the board made a movement to, to increase $1,000 each year until we covered those costs or until the board decided not to do that. To give you an idea, the cost for the, for the season for, for ice this year was just under $9,000. We've put into our budget monies that next year could cover up to that dollar. Okay, so when you see our budget, we've done that. I don't know, right now, we've had dedicated $2,000 for this year, but certainly under new business, if, if But certainly under new business, if, if it's something that you as a group, individuals wanted to talk about, you could. I just wanted to bring that up again. Certainly came up to us and I, I get it from, from, from some parents who are saying, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't, I'm not, never hearing, you know, we don't wanna pay for, you know, the, the shirts, the warmups, the, you know, things like that that are extra, you know, maybe for the, that aren't part of the uniform itself, you know? But it's about the, really the ice time that we talked about. And, and so everybody knows, for our girls team, we do cover those costs for the ice. Because we have a, we actually split that cost with three, three different school districts, right? Three or four. We have a, go right ahead.
So, our, so my ninth career, so that'd be four years ago. We, that was when the Niagara County team, which consists of the four, and team that we built star.
Now, there's a four.
And we initially, the like cost I know for boys varsity and also JV having not been really associated with the sports was a different. But you always had to pay for like ice time. So, they gave us a broad class that we're gonna have to pay 400 or $500 for each player, which on top of our travel season, which is like $2,000 alone for us each year. Um, so luckily, we got that covered by, um, one of the news reporters from ESPN reached out to us and covered that. Or at least portions of it. And then we didn't have to pay as much and I didn't know it until this moment. Then I would see three stops that, but like on, like paying for jerseys and practice jerseys and all that stuff. I, I think I speak for a lot of people when we will like cover that, like the hockey players will give money and we'll make sure that that's covered. But ice time is like extremely expensive. So, I know, I know the price of varsity hockey at one point was like 800 to $1,000 for each player. That's very difficult. So, yeah.
So, I, that's all I was, all I've seen under super comments about that. Andy actually talked about seed up a little bit. Let me just give a few, a few details. We have three subcommittees we talked about before a little bit here. But one of them has, is working, continues to work on the Eco Campus Refinalization Project. That event is April 30th, okay? And it's from eight to 11:00. Also on April 30th, and the timing of the, the time of that event hasn't been solidified yet. But it's called Out of the Darkness Campus Walk.
Correct.
To support suicide prevention. That's gonna be on April 30th. Probably right after, but right around the time of the, the conclusion of the revitalization project on April 30th as well. And then on May 20th, at 8:45 PM at night, will be the elementary district wide. We like, that, that we did a couple years back and we're bringing back now. So, pretty exciting. The movie is, I'm sorry, I haven't seen it. It's Encanto. Encanto. Sorry.
Animated singing movie.
Okay.
It's a, it's a very good movie.
Okay. Okay. Wonderful. I'll see. Though, though, those are three, uh, three really great events that are gonna be happening. It's helping to engage our school committees. We're excited about this. Oh, 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 somebody was gonna jump in, right? You were just gonna jump in, right? Till June 30th, 2022, all breakfast, lunch are free. We encourage we can get you.
Almost every step of that, right? Lunch is food service. Okay, uh, now to reports, uh, finance. A bunch of presentation, Allison and Ben.
A, a lot of this, of course, is, is repetition. Okay? So, we, we'll go through some of the slides a little bit quicker because all of you have seen these slides before. However, as we get closer to the end, we have some new slides and that's what we're really gonna talk about where we are with both revenues expenditures at this point. And then we'll, we'll lay out for you what that overall expenditure budget looks like, what the revenues, we need to close that gap. And then therefore, I think at the end, you'll have an opportunity to ask us for anything that you would like us to provide or questions that we can help with. So that maybe at the next meeting or two, you could decide on the levy. Okay? And, uh, there we go. Got it. Okay, um, a, a, as, as you saw before, this right here is showing the, the total operating funds in New York State. I think the most important part of this slide is the bottom bullet. And that is that the state has made clear that they were able to balance the budget through 2027 and do that without federal funds and any of the stimulus funds. So, if, if that's true, I think that's really good news for all of us because we haven't seen that happen before. Or at least no claims of that this early. But, you know, obviously time will tell. This, this is a really neat slide because I think it's important. Public education is, uh, uh, right in New York State and in the United States. And you can see that public education takes up about 19% of the total spending in New York State. And, and, and I, and I will say this, our state, even in really difficult years, has provided funding for education. Okay? Very few times has there been zero. But we all know that what they haven't done is fully funded foundation aid formula that was part of a court decision. So, we're getting close to that day.
Um, this slide is just going to get over again, the foundation aid totals. So, there was a $1.6 billion increase to foundation aid in the executive budget. The aid payment being paid to the districts is either the difference between, or the higher increase of either 3% of your 2021 foundation aid or 50% of the positive difference calculated to make the district whole, basically. So, uh, we would have fallen under the 50% of the difference to make us whole. And I think you might see that on this slide.
That's right.
This just again shows the total foundation aid increases and the projections moving forward to make the districts whole. This just goes through a brief history of the foundation aid and 2007 it was created. Then it was frozen in 2009. Then they put the gap elimination adjustment on us, if you remember that. And then the property tax cap law was introduced. In 2016, the GEA was fully restored. In 2020, there was no aid increase in foundation aid. And there was a pandemic, that was, it was actually given to us and then taken back, called a pandemic adjustment. And then last year, or the current year, we had the increase with the promise of the three-year phase-in. So, this was year one of three.
So, it, so, i- i- think of it this way. There was a court case that said, this is the bottom, this is the formula that should be used to determine how much districts receive. And within two years of that, they froze that. So, people weren't receiving the increases that were expected, right? And instead of saying, well, we're not gonna follow that court case anymore because they, it was law, right? It was a determination made by a court that they should have followed it. They, they said, well, what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're, we're, we're not gonna give you everything and we're gonna kind of hold that back. And that's where the gap elimination adjustment happened, right? So, those dollars kept adding up every year because they were no longer fully funding foundation aid. Fast forward, good news, is that by the next year's budget season, would they should fully close that gap? And every district in New York State should be fully funded when it comes to foundation. Next year's budget season, issue, following through in this promise. So, we're in a much better place than we were a number of years ago.
Um, this is just showing again how we got the increase we did. So, the total foundation aid due Niagara Week Field, as per the formulas, that top line, $23,874,646. So, they use the base from the 2122 year, which was last year. And that difference divided by two or multiplied by point five is $949,481. It was either being paid that or 3% of that base year aid, uh, which would have been $659,271. But because we are not fully funded, we got the greater of the two. So, we're getting $949,481 for the next two years.
And, and, and really what this slide shows is this, that, and this is important for everybody to know. Because when, when the state puts out their, their, their funding numbers, sometimes you go, wait, this doesn't match what they said last year they were gonna give. Well, the, the, the formula is constantly changing and moving, okay? So, you know, it's based on a number of different factors, a lot of which comes in through your, you know, your beds data. So, those numbers fluctuating a little bit from year to year. It's okay that you can't see this slide unless you really wanted to get up close and look at this slide. But what this slide shows you is what all of the gaps were in each of the years of what we were supposed to receive in foundation aid versus what we did. And again, next year's budget should finally close, not the budget that we're working on right now and talking about. But the year after that, the 23, 24 budget should fully close that gap. We should be fully funded.
Fully funded. We just wanna be clear, fully funded for the year, not, they won't go back and give us back what they owe us, right? It's just fully funded as of that year.
So, exactly. So, all those other dollars, that's like, all those other dollars that they would owe us, we're not seeing those. And we don't, we kind of give up open.
So, this is the tax cap levy worksheet again, just showing that our levy limit plus exclusions is at $35,614,478 or 2.57% over prior year. That's the levy limit. That's the maximum that can be levied, uh, using, uh, with a majority budget vote. If you go over that, that's when you need a super majority budget vote and you can always go under it. This is just again, a review of where the levy's been over the last five years and the increase over prior year. Um, and currently, in the current year, you could see we were 1.99% over prior year. But the average, the five-year average has only been 1.67% for this district. This is the TRS rate, the teacher retirement system rates. And this is the employer's share that we pay based on all of the salaries, teacher salaries. So, this is our employer obligation toward the retirement system. This year, uh, or for next year, I should say, it went up to 10.29% from 9.53%.
And then if you remember, you'll see in a minute, you know, when we show the reserves, um, we were able to add in TRS reserves. So, we have significant fluctuations or fluctuations, um, you can always decide to utilize some of those reserves to pay this part of your budget. Right?
Uh, and this is the same thing for the ERS. So, this is the non-teaching staff that belong to the state retirement system. That rate went down considerably for next year. It went from 16.2 to 11.6%. Um, and again, we have a reserve for those dollars as well, um, if we need to use it. This is just a review again of what reserves we have as of the end of the year last year. So, we have a workers' compensation reserve at just over 1.18 million. At the ERS retirement reserve at 1.7 million. The TRS reserve at $579,000. Other employee benefits are retiree benefits upon, uh, upon retirement, what we would pay to those employees. Uh, and that's just over $931,000. We have two active capital transportation reserves that are both, when you see that full, that means they're fully funded. We can no longer add money to them. Those were voter approved and they have to be voter approved to, to fund and to utilize. So, we have two capital transportation reserves that are used for our bus purchases and any fleet purchases that we would buy for facilities. The first one has about 1.6 million and that one we would have expensed this year's bus purchases from and $3 million in the second. We have a, a 2019 capital improvements reserve, which is also full. That was $6 million voter approved. We have $4.3 million left in that. We have the 2021 capital technology reserve at $2 million. That is full and we have $2 million in there. That again, if you remember, was approved to facilitate technology purchases for hardware for students and teaching staff. We have an appropriate fund balance of just over 2.2 million and that was used to balance the current year's budget. We have an assigned unappropriated fund balance of just over 5.9 million. And that's the money that will be put into a new capital reserve that is on the budget vote. There's a proposition on for that in May. That money will go directly to that reserve. We have our 4% unassigned fund balance at just over 3.1 million, which is fully funded. So, then you can see our total reserves and fund balance are just over $26.7 million.
If I could just, just highlight a few, few of them up there, right? We've obviously had a lot of capital project work done and we still have a lot of capital project work to go. As I've said before, you know, there were a lot of years, um, where there wasn't work done. So, the last, you know, six years, we just, seven years, we've done a lot of planning and a lot of work. And we needed, and we're, and we're not, we're not there yet. We still have places where, you know, while we've been doing these projects, the, the roofs that weren't repaired hadn't been repaired. And we're now, in the next project, going to need to really do that. When, when you look at that assigned unappropriate fund balance, we've talked about this before. And today you talked about the improvement propositions, one of the most $100 for capital project reserve. And that's what we, we've talked about a number of times, putting that money there, okay? Because remember, we have to pay on a project 20%, approximately 20%, more than 20%, 22%. But, you know, so if you figure, you, you know, we currently have, what, what, one of our projects, a $30,000 project that's going, a $30,000 project, you know, 20% of that, $6 million. We had an $18 million project, right, recently? You know, when, when, when you start taking 22% of those numbers, you, you eat up those, those funds, you know, relatively quickly. And then, you know, our district, our size, there's a lot of buildings. It's kind of work that, that needs to be done. The, um, the unassigned fund balance, I just, Allison or I, one of us will always make sure we take the opportunity to say that we don't believe that that 4% is enough, particularly for our district. When we get stuck with a year where we have to fully fund or front the money for the Tuscoror School almost all of that money, which is the money that we use for cash flow, could be gone. And that makes the budget press very difficult. As you may know, municipalities do not have that 4% requirement that they have to stay under. We do. It certainly makes the cash flow really tricky. And when you don't have cash flow, you have to borrow money. If you borrow money, if you borrow money, you have to pay interest on that. So, if, if it's considered the fault of ours, we have to pay that interest. That's not gonna be fair. It's a bond raise. See, my, my, okay, thanks. The, um, and, and the capital technology one, you know, thank you for helping and then putting that out there for us to establish that. As you, a lot of you know, we, the last handful of years, we've really purchased our technologies into the year one-time funds. It's not really great for planning. So, now our technology environment has a plan in place for replacement that's just consistent. And being able to pull from, utilize those funds as we move along is a really important thing. And it's a much better way of doing, doing business. Any questions on any of these ones here? Yeah?
And the, um, the TRS and the ERS, it showed the fluctuation rates. Are those market-based or?
Yes, we're usually about three years behind. So,
Really no predictor to say, hey, next year it's gonna be?
No, no, there's not. And then you can see those fluctuations. And when you're in those years, you don't know. But they, it usually falls a few years behind markets.
Okay, so this is just showing the expenditure budget and where we've been over the last five years and where we're going next year. So the planned budget amount right now is at seventy nine million, eight hundred twenty six thousand one hundred thirty seven dollars, which is a point seven six percent increase over current year. And you can see the the percents are the budget to budget increase from year to year. So next year is pretty, pretty much a, almost a flat budget. Not looking to add, rather to kind of try to keep it tight, you know, so that I know, you know, this year maybe tight, you know, trouble people understanding spending and stuff. And I know things increase, so we've increased expenditures, but we've moved them around such that some of the funds that were remaining in other lines have been moved to where we know we're going to need them this year. If that makes sense.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, so you know, if you think of our budget lines, you know, we've we we always talk about trying to keep them tighter, tighten them up, or we're tightening them up more for next year than we ever have. We're okay, we feel comfortable, but they're tight. And we've we've done that because we know that the state has given four percent of the foundation aid. And you know, we, we, two, it wasn't two point five seven percent, we know it might be a little bit lofted, of course, that's the board's, the board's discretion. So we believe that this is a very fair budget. And understand that, just like New York State, we're not balancing this budget with any of those funds. So so here are all of the revenues. And so for for everybody's understanding here, the number that we plugged in for for taxes, the levy amount, is the number at two point five seven percent. We're not saying that that's where we expect the number to be, that's the number that we plugged into this form. Should we, should the board elect to go with a number lower than two point five seven percent? There's a couple of things you can do, you can adjust your expenditure budget because you would have the revenues. Or you can pull from some of our other reserves. This is the percentage wise, the smallest percentage of our budget that's come from reserves in a number of years. So if we had to up that a little bit, it's certainly a place that we could do that, and we feel comfortable. Any questions on that?
Okay, I'll just, I'll just speak a little bit. The capital transportation reserve amount, that eight hundred twenty thousand dollars is directly for the bus purchases. Okay, that's going to be a line in the expenditure budget, there's a proposition for that as well. And the capital technology reserve at eight hundred thousand is also a direct line in the budget. That is for, and there will be a proposition on for that as well, you've seen it. That's for the purchase of technology equipment for classrooms.
Fiscal stress, not too long ago, we were the most fiscally stressed district in New York State. We're not there anymore, and the entire business office deserves a ton of credit, as does the board. When you get to the number that we're at now, and you can see where right where we want to be, it's because of, you know, really good planning, doing things the right way, making sure that you don't have to borrow money, paying for money projects through money that's in reserves versus having to borrow. All of those really help our ratings and make sure that we're not in a position to be physically stressed. So, excuse me. So at our next meeting, we, the budget preparation really just allows the time. We can certainly provide some slides that show different amounts. If the board would like, we've certainly done that in past years of what that levy amount is. Then you know, if you were at this amount, if you were at this amount, here's what we have to move, this is what we have to make up for if that's. And and the the last slide here, we left on, and we probably won't be on the next presentation, just in case anybody's watching tonight that didn't watch before. If you're wondering what our district's doing with regard to the future of bus transportation, there certainly could be a time of all this goes through, that we would be away from the buses that we are currently purchasing to electric school buses. We're not there, it's a future item, it's certainly something. We'll continue to watch and monitor when we feel like the technology and the cost is in a place where we can do it. And the laws, and so gives me force to do it, we'll certainly move in that direction. Maybe, let's see. Thanks, Dan. Which one did you want to? This one right here, yeah. So if you if you look down at the bottom right, and you can see the different reserve amounts that we're utilizing. So what we, what we, what we, when we present different amounts in the levy, one of the ways to adjust that is to more, pull a little bit more from the reserve amounts to to bump up any of those revenue lines to meet the expenditures. And as a percentage of our budget, this is really the least amount that we've had to, that we've been appropriating from our reserves compared to past years. So there's a comfort level we certainly would have in bumping that up a little bit from the reserve, from what's in our reserves to the revenue budget.
We did use it in the past, right?
Oh, correct, and we're using it now, it's just a while much.
Well, what's happened is our expenditures ended up being less than anticipated. So although we've used it, the comptroller likes to see us use these reserves, they don't want to see them just sit there. So technically, it ends up being like an in and out, so, right? So we pull it out and use it against the expense, and then we refund it with any fund balance we have so that we always have, maintain, you know, an appropriate level of reserve. The interfund transfer number there, that eight hundred thousand, is right now what I've budgeted for the Greenway bond. So that's money that comes into us from the the Greenway commission. That money goes directly and can only be spent on that bond for the work that was done in the district years ago. And like I said, the capital, excuse me, capital transportation reserve and technology reserve have offsetting expenditures. So if the voters don't approve that, that come, you know, that would come out, we wouldn't use it. Those are retirement reserve funds that our expenditures far exceed those numbers. So we would use those numbers to kind of balance the budget.
To offset some of the costs. In other words, at the end of the the year, we don't expect that we're going to use seven hundred thousand dollars from ERS. But we might use a hundred, or we might use three hundred thousand, or we might use five.
Well, if we go back to the reserves, you can see.
Dan, can you go back and slide the reserves?
I mean, the bet, the budget, when I submit to New York State, has to balance with expenditures and revenues. So we wouldn't have the revenues. And there's always, you know, reserve space in the expenditure budget for things like, and I think we've discussed this before, like, if we get specialized kids in that are high cost, I have to have that money somewhere to be able to pay for that. So if we don't get those things in that are like that, then we underspend our budget, then I don't have to use those reserve funds. Okay?
So so about just to have one question, right? So we had a budget seven hundred thousand dollars out of the the ERS retirement fund, there's one point seven there, so there's still a million dollars. Yeah, exactly, we should come. We should come nowhere close to utilizing that seven hundred thousand dollars.
Hopefully, you know, if the budget.
We we'd still still be in a million, we'd be in a nice.
Yeah, yeah.
What is the dollar figure of the tax level increase?
Two point five seven? Oh, the actual dollar mark?
I think it's on there, it's on there. Next, maybe? Right here.
Yeah.
Oh, so we we only have.
So it's the difference, thirty five, six, one, four minus the thirty four, seven, two, oh. I said seven hundred some thousand dollars maybe. About seven hundred some thousand dollars.
If you subtract that top number, thirty four, seven, twenty.
From the bottom number. We could show that at the next meeting, I think that's what we talked about. Yeah.
Are you doing it over there, Dan?
Yeah, it's almost, almost nine hundred thousand.
Eight, eight ninety three.
Yep.
Correct.
So at different increment levels, is there, on the expense side, ideas?
We would probably take from the reserves more, that's all, to balance. Because right now, there are no other revenues to pull from, so I would have to take it from a reserve somewhere, just increase the amount used. Yeah.
But was that your question, Jason?
Well, yeah, that was a consideration.
Sure, like that's why I said, I mean, you you have two ways to balance that, right? You can, you can.
I'm sorry, there is one other way I can use it is, this year, if we don't use all the appropriated fund balance, whatever's left, I can roll, and I can add it to that as well without touching the reserves.
And I think though, your your question was about the expenditure budget itself. Oh, okay, okay, yeah, so there's, absolutely, there's multiple ways to do it, right? And remember, if you if you remove something from the expenditure budget, you're usually talking about program, what do you want to, you know, remove? Or 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 like, you know, who, if it's a, that it's a staff, or that's where that comes from. We're very tight when it comes to like supplies, equipment, money, you know, those things are very tight. Matter of fact, you know, this is what I was really, too, when I was talking about the technology for a long time. Most districts in their, their general fund or technology reserve, they they have their technology amounts in there. We've been doing, we don't wait until the end of the year and say, oh, let's see what we have. And the last few years, you know, that we've been able to add things, we've done things for capital projects. But it's not really the way that, you know, you want to be making sure that you're up to date with technology, you know, so. You know, I don't think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of other things built into that expenditure budget that wouldn't be programmed.
I don't know if they have fine items to tighten up.
Yeah, well, and.
Do you know of a year that maybe?
Great, no, great question. Of course, we look at all of them, as a matter of fact, every year, Allison prints out the whole thing from all the budget lines. And I think the point to that, point seven six.
Yeah.
Expenditure budget from year to year is a really small number.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very small, when you consider what the, you know, contractual increases are, what the cost of supplies has gone up incredibly. You know, I mean, just, like I said, I tried to really tighten up and move the money appropriately where I think it would be spent next year.
And and just one more thing, you know, I think is really important. When you look at, you know, can I go back one, Dan? Thank you. When you, when you look at that assigned appropriate fund balance, which came from surplus this last year, and you say, well, geez, almost six million dollars, that's a lot of money. Come on, you guys can't get close to that. Always think of two sides of the budget. Right? So if you're four percent under under spending on a seventy million dollar budget, that's two point eight million dollars. If you're, if you're revenues come in four percent higher, so you under budget on your revenues, four percent on a seventy million dollar budget, that's two point eight million dollars. You put those two together here, five point six million dollars. I don't know how close you want, how much closer you'd want to be on a seventy something million dollar budget, when you have so many things that fluctuate. Right? So, you know, those things are all taken into consideration too. Great question, we can look it up, we'll we'll give you that. No, I think the levy was on here, that was one point nine nine. I didn't, I didn't know if you meant the budget increase. Anything else? Okay, thanks.
Okay, I guess before we proceed, was there any other questions for Dan or Allison moving forward? Budget wise, or we'll take a look next month, or no, next month, next meeting, and then look at some percentages of the tax cap and see how will it affect and roll up reserves and so on.
What I thought we could do is this, certainly, a few weeks, number now, but what what I thought we would do is I'd bring a number of different, we'd bring breakdowns like we did last night. And then you can talk about it together. Oh, we we can, we can do any point five increments or something like that, does that work? We'll do two, two points, whatever, two point five seven, two point five, all the way down.
Yeah, and we go one point nine nine and see where it was last year to this year.
Sure, we can do two, you know, like, we'll give you a number, and then we can, we can do the calculations live to find something.
The answer, yeah.
That's right, that's why I looked over that way.
Okay, uh, any, let's see, is there any items for board discussion? Yes, Lord, nothing, any old business? New business? Yeah, I was going to bring those up. The weapons detection system. I would like to add that to next month's meeting, or the next meeting for discussion and possible approval. We were missing two board members, I would like to have everyone's input on that. I mean, something that that's something I think warrants full board discussion. So I'd like to make the motion to add it to the next meeting for new business, somebody wants to. A second, any, any discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? Post? Same, okay, well, we'll add that. The other item was the funding of practice time for hockey, looking at just under nine thousand dollars. My my question, Dan had mentioned that there was funding potentially available at this time without, or if you want to speak to that a little bit.
Well, you know, again, again, and, you know, last year, the board kind of gave us traction with that. And certainly, at this point in the year, we know that if the board said, you know, we'd like to do more than that, that we'd like to cover the ice type, we'd move around from a number, probably a number of different budget codes to cover that ice, that ice type. So that last year, the idea was that we would add a thousand dollars each year, and then close, close, close those costs and miss two thousand. And we've built, we've put in the budget, certainly you you could take out for next year, money that would close that gap and we'd be able to do it, right? So if in the, one of the reasons it certainly came from a couple of board members at times, but also, you know, we've got some parents certainly that have written, and Mr. McKenna's been been pushing for it, certainly, and been, you know, obviously is very supportive of it. He knows it's the only sport that he has to, you know, to do this for, and where the NWSA puts out, you know, bills for parents for this. And so if it's certainly up to board, if that interests.
You heard what Annie said earlier, you were saying the dollar amount is probably around a thousand dollars per player?
Yeah, a lot alone, it's the only sport that's not on the campus. So it's very difficult when you're occupied, and you see all a lot of money go towards, that are on purpose. And although that's a great addition, it's just difficult knowing that there's all these other additions and numbers.
Appreciate your input on that, it's something, I I know that cost is out there, I was, I wasn't aware that that cost was extreme. And that's gets into the pay to play philosophy of sports that we certainly don't want any student athletes not to be able to play a sport because of the financial difficulty. And I know they said boosters and and such have made up differences for families and such. But I think if we can close the gap, that's something we should do. Any other board member comments on this topic?
Yeah, I just want to add that, you know, I definitely think that going to official funding would give the hockey.
Yeah, I just want to add that, you know, I definitely think that going to official funding would give the hockey because you don't want to be cost prohibitive for any students that may not have the option to play because of the additional expense we're talking about. Especially hockey, stick is 300, the parent states is probably 100,000 days that they have to pay for. So if the funding's there, not only for future, even if the funding's there for this year, even potentially help the families, I would recommend that we discuss that.
I just asked for some input, do you feel we want to add, this is a new business item for next meeting, or did you want to move on it this evening?
I think I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I don't think there would be any objection.
Okay? All right, then I will make the motion that the board will support funding the ice time, practice, the practice ice time, which is just under $9,000 just here. We'll give that approval, I'll look for a second. I go for a vote, all in favor? Opposed? Substained? And it varies, and we'll find that.
Mr. McKenna, the hockey parent, Mr. McKenna and the hockey parents will certainly be really thankful for that. And as was mentioned, you know, that it's a sport where I think a lot of the parents expect that they're paying for the sticks and a lot of the other equipment because they play in other leagues, so they expect that, but covering that ice time is, is a really good thing, so, thanks.
One more question, will this carry out the discussion for future or is it already established for next year, correct?
We've, we've put that in the budget for next year, correct?
Okay, very good. I'm moving on. Moving on. Moving on, public comments, board member comments, anyone looking bad?
I guess we're not here, but congratulations to our graduates. It's really nice to see that the individuals really pushed themselves to get to that point. And it's really, you know, plus for them, so it's, I like to congratulate them on that. As far as the BOCs, we did go to the BOCs and it was, it's, it's a great opportunity for students in this district to look into seeing what's out there. Because there's quite a few things that are out there at BOCs that you won't see anywhere else. So it's a good chance to take, give it, take a look at what they have to offer and see what's available to your students.
I wanted to say, like, on behalf of, there was a lot of students that went to Duck State last week, so a lot of them qualified very high. I think if you were going to nationals, maybe, but Mr. Burksoff brought them to State Rochester on Wednesday last weekend, it went very well.
Any other board member comments? Okay, all right, can I call for a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm saying we are concluded, thank you.